Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Budget Committee of the whole agenda for Tuesday, February 23rd, 2021. Number one, the call to order. Two, are there any disclosure of community pecuniary interests? Seeing none, approval of the agenda. Need a mover and seconder. Councillor Vane, Councillor Frick. Moved by Councillor Vane, seconded by Councillor Frick, resulted the agenda for the Budget Committee of the whole meeting of February 23rd, 2021 be approved. All in favor? Let's carry it. We have no delegations tonight, so we're going to start with a presentation by Stephen Greninger, Treasurer. Stephen, welcome. Or is Harry going to speak first?
Yeah.
CAO Schlang? All right, perfect. CAO Schlang?
Thank you very much, Mayor. And Stephen will just put the presentation up. We'll wait till that comes up. Thank you, Stephen. So Stephen and I will be doing the presentation. It's a privilege on behalf of staff to present this proposed 2021 budget to the community and council. As you know, we've had the presentation out there for about a couple of weeks, so we're going to highlight just some of the top items on each slide, not go over them comprehensively, and take some questions after. But really, what we wanted to talk about is how we're helping Grimsby emerge stronger in 2021. We've learned a tremendous amount together in 2020 with the pandemic, and we really want to move the community, the organization, from recovery to resilience and reimagining how the way we deliver services and provide value to the citizens of this community. The presentation content, I'll be talking really quickly about 2020 at a glance, because really what we want to know is 2021. Pass it over to Stephen, and he'll highlight some of the value that we'll be providing in 2021 with the numbers, as well as the affordability and some of the property tax impacts, and then some of the survey results. I will then do some concluding remarks to finish off the presentation. As you know, council, you set up bold and courageous direction in 2020, and you invested in the future, and this provided a lot of momentum as we presented in mid-January on some of your accomplishments. And we want to just highlight a few of those quickly. You know that in the midst of, you know, in March, we solidified the strategic priorities, and then a few weeks later, the pandemic hit. But we never missed a step. We managed the pandemic together as council and staff, and we still delivered some major priorities and advanced some key initiatives forward. And just to highlight a few, and again, we talked about this before, but protecting heritage, the great work that's being done in the Grimsby Beach. Want to talk a little bit about council having the courage to invest in the first transit service, which our residents are really taking on. And then, of course, who can forget the hospital? You know, it's been a great year for that, you know, solidifying our funding in the 2020 budget, getting some funding solidified with the region, and really advancing the project forward into stage three in 2020. So that momentum is what we want to continue on in 2021. And also, what we were really proud of together with council was the partnerships we developed in the community and caring about our community, the reverse parade, the food drives that we partnered with GBF and our volunteer firefighters, really to show, you know, the community that we cared about them in the midst of this pandemic. And we've hearing a lot about bending the curve in the last year. This is a graph that shows we're bending the curve upward, which is a good thing. When this council took over in 2018, we were in an operation deficit position. And over the last two years, with some slight surpluses, we're really moving forward on advancing our reserves, much needed reserves in the corporation. So we're bending the curve in the right direction. And now I'd like to pass it over to Stephen, who will start to take you through the value and the financials. Stephen?
Thank you, Mr. Schlang. We'll start to look at the 2021 budget. So when we started with the budget process, the team decided on a couple of themes. As Mr. Schlang already mentioned, one of them was emerging stronger. But we also, we're looking at caring for our community today and with a view to the future. We are caring for our community today as we still grapple with the COVID-19 pandemic, while also looking towards the future of Grimsby. So the operating budget summary, so the general operating budget, we're looking at a total budget of about $24.7 million. And on the right, in the loony, you can see how that breaks down into the various departments. Our capital budget summary of about $13.2 million. You can see how that breaks down amongst the different asset categories, roadways and shoreline facilities. And what I really want to stress here is that there was no levy increase in the capital budget. That was a major commitment we made, that CAO and I decided that in order to keep this budget under control, there had to be no increase in capital spending. Summary of the water and sewer budget, total operating and capital for water and sewer of about $16 million. Initiatives, so we just want to touch on a few items of what we're trying to accomplish in 2021. We knew this year was going to be a tight budget year, but the team came together and wanted to build on the momentum that we started and that we set in 2020 and further advance on council's priorities. And I believe we accomplished that goal in this budget. So the next few slides in the presentation will list some of those initiatives. Just, sorry, just give me one second. So we did was we grouped this into council's strategic priorities. So first, under responsible development, we're looking at the redesign of the Casablanca QEW interchange in partnership with the region, and also the Grimsby Secondary School land use study. Under business traction and growth, we're looking at economic development on a business retention plan and the initiation of a long-term economic strategy. Under accountability and transparency, one of the projects that's ongoing right now is the Ward Boundary and Council Compensation Review, which the town clerk has, as you know, gotten off to a great start. Also, we have AODA compliance measures that need to be met, along with some new innovation tools, self-service tools for the community. Under transportation and road safety, we're looking at the continuation of the two-year pilot project for the Niagara Regional Transit On Demand, continued safety improvements of the Grimsby Diamond, and of course, continued maintenance on the town's roadways. Under heritage and culture, we're looking at more heritage designations and plaques. Under the environment, further advancing the town shoreline protection, tree planting, the Carolinian forest. We're looking at implementing or developing that climate action framework and looking at some facility energy audits for the PKC Town Hall and the library. And finally, under community amenities, we're looking at investing in the replacement of the Gibson Street Pedestrian Bridge, pickleball court. I have to admit, this got a lot of attention in the Grimsby budget survey and the start of phase one of the Casablanca Beach Park. Also, as part of 2020 initiatives, this is one we wish we didn't have to continue working on, but it's managing the second wave of the COVID-19 pandemic. The pandemic will most likely be with us right through 2021. The town will continue to invest its resources to keep the community safe, and will be partnering with regional public health to ensure that everyone who wants a vaccine will get one. And we also thought, like, we'd like to specifically highlight some projects that are part of the 2021 initiatives that staff would like to move forward with, the first being a number of heritage initiatives, including the Main Street East Comprehensive Strategy, the Grimsby Beach. This is a total investment of about $440,000 with no levy impact, as these projects will be funded from both reserves and development charges. Also, downtown reimagined is one we'd like to highlight, look at conducting a strong visioning exercise with the whole community to shape the future Grimsby's downtown, which includes a priority of a pedestrian square, which was brought up in council's strategic priorities. The exercise will also integrate concurrent projects like the downtown water main replacement, century condos, and the continuation of the patio program. As just previously mentioned, we have the continuation of the 2020 patio program. This will happen along both Main Street and Winston for both restaurants and retailers. This initiative, again, has no levy impact, as it will be funded from the town's provincial COVID grant. I'll now move into some capital highlights. First one being, as I mentioned previously, the Gibson Street Pedestrian Bridge. Again, this will be funded partially from a grant and also from reserves. The project is looking at replacement of the existing bridge with an aluminum truss bridge with e-pay decking. Also, another highlight is the QEW Casablanca Interchange with partnership through the region. The redesign will incorporate the complete street philosophy in order to improve multimodal traffic flow. Also, in capital, parks improvements to a number of parks, including Arrowhead, Sherwood and Cindy Park. And as I mentioned previously, the start of phase one of the Casablanca Beach Park, a multimillion-dollar project over a few years. Also of importance, continued major investment in protecting our natural waterfront from erosion. Couple areas in particular, water park and, so Whittaker Park and the pump house, and six through ninth street shoreline protection. Also, we're looking at the replacement of the Grimsby Public Library's heating, ventilation and air conditioning system. It's a replacement of the original system after, I believe, it's been about 17 years now. The Grimsby Public Library has always been a strong partner of the town and investing in a very well-used town asset. This project is funded solely from the COVID capital grant. Also, we're looking at the purchase of maintenance management software for the town. It's a much-needed investment to manage the town's $710 million in assets and allows the town to modernize and protect and preserve its critical assets. So up until now, we've talked about our physical capital, and now we need to look at our most critical resource, our human capital. It's been decades since we've looked at internal and gender equity and a learning and development program. This project will have no impact on the levy and will be funded solely through the modernization grant. Also wanted to highlight what is not included in the budget and possibly for future considerations. So in light of the hospital contribution in caring for our community, financially, we didn't think it was the right time to introduce these initiatives. The 2021 budget does not include a dedicated communications resource. We continue to do the best we can at the corner of our desks. Also, we won't be introducing an infrastructure levy at this time, and we are going to hold off on the purchase of a new aerial fire truck, as we are currently looking at a shared fire service with the town of Lincoln. So the town had a number of financial pressures we had to overcome in preparing this budget. I think I can speak on behalf of our CEO, Mr. Schlang, when I say how proud we are of how the team came together to produce this budget. It wasn't just a finance project, it was shared equally through the whole corporation. Once we knew what the difficulties would be, we collectively tightened our belts to help keep the tax levy down. So the financial pressures in this budget were that there were no adjustments to inflation unless required by necessity or due to some contractual obligations. In other words, it was a flatline budget. We have existing commitments to labor contracts of about $330,000. And we had a surprise from our insurer with a 32% premium increase over last year. And this was not unlike all of the other municipalities in the region, or probably right across the province of Ontario. So between these two items of about $450,000, it's a hurdle we had to overcome, and we did the best we could to mitigate it. Another financial pressure we had was that Grimsby had the second lowest growth in the region in 2020, at only 1.02%. And that's something that was very surprising. I was very surprised when I looked at the growth numbers from other municipalities, because usually Grimsby usually ranks at or near the top of growth. So it was a real surprise that in 2020, we were the second lowest. So in 2021, for the budget, we had to... We used a corporate philosophy of delivery or preparing the budget that was financially responsible. We assured that there was no ongoing operational expenses that were going to be funded from reserves. We also prevented any operational budget impacts from being deferred to future years. And the budget was prepared, taking the town's 2021 and 22 financial needs into account. So where did we end up? We ended up at a levy increase of 1.81% net of growth. Now I'd like to talk about the temporary special levy for the hospital, for West Lincoln Memorial Hospital. With the recent passing of the 2021 Niagara Regional Budget, regional council approved their share of the hospital funding at $12.6 million. This allowed the West Lincoln municipalities of Grimsby, Lincoln and West Lincoln to calculate their share of the funding. You can see in the table that Grimsby share comes in at 11.8 million, and Lincoln and West Lincoln come in at a combined 14... Sorry, 15.4 million. The 2021 budget will continue to incorporate the temporary special levy to help fund the redevelopment of the hospital with a levy increase of 0.83%. So how are we going to pay for this? So last year, we developed a funding plan in the 2020 budget. And we want to continue with that funding plan with a slight modification. So the town's hospital commitment will be funded through a 30-year debenture starting in 2024. Last year, we had estimated a 20-year debenture and a higher rate projection. With the COVID-19 pandemic, interest rates have dropped significantly, and we were able to lower our interest rate forecast. So that's why you'll see the commitment to the hospital over the next three years came down, came from $200,000 down to $121,000. The main objective is to ensure that we build the debt service payments into the levy by 2024 of $563,000. What I want to stress and make clear is that after 2023, there will be no additional incremental tax levy increases for this temporary special levy on the hospital. So looking at the water and sewer budgets, we're looking at a water rate increase of three-quarters of a point. This looks, will result in approximately $4.55 for the average home. And on the sewer side, looking at a levy increase of just over 1.5%, and this will equate to a 64 cent increase on the average residential home. Affordability, we showed this slide, we showed this graph last year's budget. And Grimsby at the time was the lowest or the second lowest, and we remain at the second lowest in terms of affordability of average property, of property taxes per $100,000 of assessment. Also, in terms of affordability, Grimsby still ranks at the bottom tied with Pelham for the lowest percentage of household income for your water, sewer and taxes. So tying this all together, and the impact to ratepayers in Grimsby. So you can see in the chart, the town of Grimsby's operations will see a 1.81% increase in the levy with a net bill impact of just under half a point or $21 or $1.75 per month. Then there's the temporary special levy for the hospital, which will add an additional $10 to the levy. And then the Niagara region coming in at 1.8% or net levy increase with $53 on the tax bill. Overall, a combined increase of 1.75%. Now I'd just like to briefly discuss some of the community engagement that's resulting from the survey. So the survey was available from January 21st to February 16th. It was available through most of the social media platforms, and I just wanted to mention that this is not a scientific survey. So results, we had of 248 visits, we had 129 surveys submitted. 90 to 100% of residents ranked these below these themes as important. And additionally, 75, 89% of survey respondents indicated climate change, heritage and transportation were also important. The chart, the little word map on the right, shows the larger the print means it got more hits, basically, in the survey. It was the thing that people talked about most. So you can see that when I mentioned before pickleball, pickleball really had a big impact in the survey. That's why you can see the, where pickleball is in such big letters. And, you know, heritage is also in there, amenities, and the smaller the letters, the lesser importance, or the fewer times it came up in the survey. What I want to show on this chart here is 63% of respondents either preferred to maintain current tax increases or also would consider an increase in their taxes. I now would like to turn it over to Mr. Schlang for some concluding remarks.
Thank you, Stephen. And again, Stephen went through what was so critical in this budget was to not just look at this year, but look at the impact in 2022. We didn't want to kick the can down the road and defer projects into next year, which might create a spike in the property tax rate. So we really looked at this with a strong lens and strong view of 2021, 2022. We also feel that this budget provides the right financial sustainability, along with affordability, to keep the momentum that this council has established and developing value for our community. We're going to continue to care for our community through the pandemic and for an overall tax increase with everything combined, the hospital, the town, the region and the education at 1.75%. So I really want to conclude with the last slide. Again, this budget is, we're talking about helping Grimsby emerge stronger. This council and setting some of their goals at the start of the council term always wanted to position the corporation and the community better than what they inherited, and even better to hand off to the next generations. And we feel this budget will foster or enable us to continue with the strong initiatives that you've put forward and maintain some sustainability and affordability for our residents. So thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, CAO. Councillor Frick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first thing I've got to say is, thank you to the budget team for putting together an absolutely great presentation, which covers, I think, all of the concerns and issues and challenges we have. I'm sure there's a tremendous amount of work by everybody on the team. I would assume that every department head was under immense pressure over the past bit of time. It's a very good presentation, very easy to understand, and I know there's, you know, there's lots of questions, but I have earmarked a few here. I've got some questions, some comments. Some of them come from constituents, some of them are mine, but I'm just...
What we're going to do is, we're going to receive the budget presentation and then do the questions during the consolidated, if that works?
It works for me.
All right. So do you want to move? Receive, and we just need a seconder. Councillor Vane? Moved by Councillor Frick, seconded by Councillor Vane, resulted the 2021 proposed budget presentation be received. All in favor? Let's carry it. And I'll just get a mover and seconder for the consolidated budget to be received, and then we can discuss. See, Councillor Cadwell and Councillor Sharp. Now we can go with the questions.
They go now?
Yes.
Yeah, I must admit, I'm really encouraged to see this budget and to see that you've put a lot of effort into trying to keep this budget in a reasonable increase for the year. When I compare it with a lot of the other municipalities across Ontario, I mean, I know they've all come in, most of them have come in very low this year, even Toronto came in at 0.7%. So everybody's been looking very carefully at this year's budgets. So I'm just going to run through a couple of things here. First, do you want to handle the presentation separately from the consolidated statements? Or you want them all at once?
Sure, yeah, all at once is good.
Okay, just one, I just want to hog the show. First of all, you're with me for a second? Under the operating budget summary with the big coin, the big Canadian loony. I just wanted to compare it with last year's, and just a couple of concerns that I want you guys to be very careful and watch very carefully. For example, I see that administration, the cost administration is 22 cents on the dollar. That's up 15% from last year. So I don't know why the administration costs have gone up that much. It's quite a bit, 15%. You can comment on it if you want, but I'm just bringing this to your attention. I see that Public Works is down to 21 cents on the dollar, and that's down by 4.5%, even though we're going into this year not increasing the capital part of the budget there. Fire Department is 14 cents on the dollar, and that's down by 6.5%. And I have a question on that, on the consolidated statement as well. Cemetery's down 100%. That's interesting. I guess less people dying, or? I'm sure there's a logical explanation. It's one cent, two cents, it's 100%.
Yeah.
Building and bylaw hasn't moved at all, that's good. Parks, recreations and facilities, I see the 21 cents on the dollar for 2021, that's down by 12.5%. Even though we're doing some pretty good work around the parks and recreation part of the budget. I see culture is eight cents on the dollar, which is down 11% over last year. So I don't know why that is. And planning is up a whopping 75% based on last year. So... I don't even want to comment on any of those big ones. Why would, let's take two, planning up 75%, administration up 50. Maybe just pick two, and maybe just comment on those if you don't mind, Stephen or Harry?
Yeah, sure. So planning, there's a number of larger projects in the budget for this year. There's the Grimsby Beach Study, the downtown, the Main Street East Studies, the land use study and the Heritage Cultural District Study. So a lot of those big dollar projects are included in the budget. But there's no real... But there's no real impact on the levy to a lot of this, even though the expenses have gone up. A lot of these projects will be funded from reserves or development charges. So really, it's an increase in expense, but it's all covered off by non-tax sources of revenue.
Okay, but the but the these numbers I'm looking at here, the 24,710,400,000 is is based on the levy, right?
No, those are expenses. That's not, it's just expenditures.
Okay, so so that's up, so planning is up 75% and that's where they where those costs are coming from?
Yeah.
Okay, and administration 15% up, is there a particular reason for that?
So the administration, the groups into it, a number of, say, departments, there's the administration department, you know, the clerks, the council, the CEO's office, finance, IT. So there's a big grouping of of departments into that, which comprises administration. In terms of the last year, the percentage, what did you indicate it was last year?
Last year for I mean, it was 19 cents on the dollar.
19 up to 22?
Yeah, that's about 15% increase.
Yeah, there I would think it would probably be salaries. As I believe some additional staffing was was introduced. And other than that, right now, I'd have to go back. I'd have to take a look.
Okay, no, it's okay. You can come back to me. It's so is there something else been lumped into administration which wasn't there last year?
I don't believe so. No, they would have been the same categories.
Okay.
Yeah.
But are they are they potentially empty positions that got filled?
That's potentially it. There was a lot of, there was a bunch of turnover in the administration department. So yes.
Okay, I'd like to come back to you in a second if you don't mind. Okay, there with me here. Under page 25 of your presentation. Under maintenance management software. I guess I'm not sure whether this is for Henry. You're talking about downtime. You're planning preventative, preventative maintenance, eliminating paperwork, including recording, workflow improvements. Online communication. Flashbully is cost saving. That that sounds like a lot of cost saving efforts in there. So are those cost savings, assuming there's cost savings by doing this, are they factored into the budget this year?
On into the budget this year, not until we actually purchase the software and it does actually produce some efficiencies. So not not at this time. The software probably won't be purchased until maybe late third to maybe fourth quarter of this year.
Okay, I guess this question is to Harry. Do you foresee some cost savings once we get this offering this? For next year?
Through you, Mayor, to the Counselor Frank, I would say that there'd be cost avoidances, you know, the whole, as you presented. We don't have enough funding for our reserves to for the replacement of many of our assets. So this will allow us to be more preventative. The software will let us know ahead of time of what to repair and when. So there'll be cost improvements over the next decade or so as we move forward with this type of software. It's imperative that for this investment, we protect the $700 million of our assets.
Yeah, but I would think that if you're preventing something from happening before it happens, you're going to have some cost savings in there as well. I mean, it's just logic, right? Okay. Just want to go to the hospital slide. Let's go to page 2032. So for the next up until 2024, there's going to be a 0.83% average on the levy. Going forward until 2024, after 2024.
After 2023.
So after 2023, where does the cost go for the basically the mortgage diventure that we're going to be entering into? Where would the cost go after that? Because we're talking what, 11.2 million dollars? So for the next few years, we're going to accumulate 563,000 and then we go into the diventure. So where would that cost go for the diventure?
Where will it go? It'll be funded from this 563,000 that we are now have now built into the levy. So this amount that we're building into the levy will cover those costs and the principal on the debt.
Okay, I got you. Okay. All right. So there's a combination of questions from the community and my own. Okay, so just I just want to make sure that the folks out there are listening. Okay, so now I just want to go to consolidated statement. Do you want to do that now? What do you want, sure, someone else a chance to talk? Mr. Mayor?
Go.
I don't want to hog the show here.
Stephen says, go ahead. So.
All right.
We'll let Stephen go.
I'm not sure.
Let you go.
Not sure, Stephen, if your pages and my pages line up, but in page 17 of the consolidated budget. Under administration. Is there more questions than anything else? I see under freedom of information, there's, we had an actual income. Wow, nearly $4,000. Where the budget was 50 bucks, $50. Does that mean we're getting a lot of FOIs?
Tremendous amount of FOIs. 2020 was just, and I think the clerk can attest to this, she was inundated with FOI request in 2020.
Geez, wow. So how much, what's the cost of an FOI, out of curiosity?
It depends on the amount of work involved. So we, when an FOI request comes in, we it, the request circulated to the staff who it would pertain to where we have to retrieve the information. We are given, we give estimates of how much, how many hours it will take to produce that data. And then it is those that is charged out. Yes, exactly. So it can range if it requires, you know, days worth of hours to to find the information, then obviously more will have to be paid.
That's okay. Okay, I just just curious because it was such a such a huge number.
Yeah.
Okay, page 20, budget under corporate revenue.
Yes.
Interest on Grimsby Power. We had an actual of 130 grand budgeted for 2020 or sorry, we we took in 130,551 actual. But we budgeted 262,540. What happened to the difference?
No, we still have to accrue the the second payment.
But there's an accrual to come.
Yeah, not to worry. We got the money.
Okay, okay.
Just have to record an entry still.
Okay, on the same page on a dividend. 2020, there was none. I see we've got budgeted $300,000 for dividends in 2021.
That's correct.
Is that going to happen, do you think?
Um, yes, we have a commitment from MPI that that money will come over. I'm not sure if you remember, would be the monies that were remaining from when GEI repaid back the MPI loan. And the monies that went over to MPI were to come back to the town and we had discussions with the MPI board and we came to an agreement that we would receive $300,000 in 2021.
And that's from that 1 million plus, is that what?
That's right. Exactly. Right on.
It's coming out of that lot. Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay, under page 21, next page.
Yes.
Under general admin. 2020 actual for transit under transit system. This this is probably just, you know, an a change because of the timing, I think. We had an actual of 83,333, but we budgeted 250. But that's probably because we didn't start till late in the year. Is that right?
Exactly. Absolutely.
Okay, answers that one. Under legal, same page. We had an actual cost of $718,000.
Yeah, and actually that number is old now. That number will be quite a bit higher. Since this document was produced, we've received quite a few more legal invoices pertaining to the 2020.
Can you just, can you just give us, for the sake of the public, just without getting into all the smaller stuff, just a quick idea of where most of that, most of the cost is?
Yeah, um, you know, I can name off, say, three, three legal actions. The air park being one. The site alteration, another one. And the downtown, the laneway. Main Doran, like the project, the century condos, the laneway, those three really, I would say, you know, are a good portion of that total.
The bulk?
I don't know if it's the bulk, but yeah, pretty close, I would say. And then there's just your day to day legal, right? Your, your, you know, planning, you know, has our lawyers, you know, review agreements and same thing with public works and HR has HR matters. So it would just be your normal run of the mill legal work. What I, what I'm in the midst of doing is preparing a new information report to council to show kind of, you know, roughly how where we spent the the legal money in 2020, just so they have a sense of what were the big items that caused most of the expense.
Just curious, how did we come up with, I mean, being that legal fees, I've got to be like asking the question, how long is a piece of string or how far is up? I mean, how do you come up with a $348,000 number? Is there some magic formula that we have?
Well, last year, if you remember, we increased the legal fees by $200,000. So I, I, just based on what I could foresee coming, the legal actions that were that were coming to light from 2019. I suggested to the CEO that we increase the legal budget by $200,000. And I, and I even remember when I presented the budget last year, I think there were a lot of gasps when when I presented that increase in the legal budget. And, you know, we still, we almost doubled that number basically still.
So is there any one or two big legal bills we see forthcoming this year?
I'm sorry, Counselor Frank, can you repeat that? I missed that.
Are there any maybe one or two big, large bills from legal that we expect this year? I mean, is there some category, some area where we expect some big legal bills?
In 2020 or 2021?
2021.
In 2021. I think the legal work, I don't think we're going to see maybe what we saw in 2020. But there's still a lot of ongoing legal files that are that are currently underway and that are currently being worked on. I think this, these numbers you see here are close are going to be start to become the new reality.
Okay, I know it's very, it's probably an unfair question to ask, you know. What do we think we're going to see those legal bills without probably disclosing some sensitive information? So I'll leave it at that. Okay, page 38.
Yeah, just give me one second.
Under firefighting salaries and benefits.
Okay, um, yes, go ahead, Counselor.
Okay, so you got the page volunteer firefighting wages?
Yes.
We had an actual of 561,000 in 2020 and we budgeted 901,000. How come it's so? There's such a difference between those numbers.
Yeah, call volume. So there was strangely a COVID effect on firefighter call volume. Which I'm not quite sure why, but for whatever reason, call volume was down. And I think we can blame it squarely on COVID and I'm not sure why, but that would be, but maybe because more people were home and there were less calls coming through to the fire department. It's, it's an interesting one, not sure. However, I might add that even though we've been in lockdown in 2021, call volume is back up. So I don't think we're going to see that savings that we saw in 2020, if things continue along the same path.
I mean, it's a big number. I just like to see some clarification around that one. And I think we've we're kind of going to continue with that number into 2021. 924,000. So are we, are we pretty sure that this is what the number is going to be? I mean, it's, you're talking.
Yeah, 2020 is not a good comparator. I think you'll probably see more the 2021 number being closer to what was maybe in 2019. Maybe a little bit less, but I think we're going to start to see the call volume go back to go back to normal, regular numbers.
Well, I was wondering if there's some opportunity there. That's all. I mean, if it's because the number is so high.
Um, I mean, I think we kind of look at those numbers on a kind of on a rolling average also. The chief estimates, you know, based on, you know, it's not just all fire calls, but it's you know, training meetings and a lot that goes into those into that wages. So I, I don't, I mean, it's possible, Counselor, but I think it's something we, those numbers we should maintain, we should maintain that budget.
Well, it's just that it stands up because it's so large. So I would, I would like to see if there's any opportunity in there of cutting that back. Okay, I'll leave that with you to talk to the chief. Okay. Under page 46.
Yep.
I mean, again, this is a question from the community. I know it's, I know what the answer is probably going to be, but under other revenues, building permits. We had an income of $159,000 actual 2020, we budgeted 575,000. Can you explain why it's such a difference there? I know what you're going to say, but for the for the public ears, would you mind?
Sure, yeah, COVID, of course. For the most part, building activity shut down in 2020 due to the pandemic, especially during the lockdowns. If I'm not mistaken, in the lockdown, commercial activity was halted. I believe that probably that has the most to do with it would be COVID, another another side effect of COVID.
So a decrease in the in the in the building industry.
Exactly.
Recent in.
Yeah, developers not coming in to get building permits.
Okay, just want to make sure that everyone out there realizes that's what that is. Okay, and we're okay with 575,000 for this year because we've continued along that line.
Yeah, we're hoping to see that, you know, building activity will will increase again in in 2021. And well, we'll see, we'll see where it goes. But yeah, we are in in the budget, we were, we wanted to hold the line on our revenues. We wanted to make sure that our revenues, we do not off or reduce revenues due to possibly any COVID effects. And any shortfalls in revenues would be covered by our COVID grant that we received.
Okay, I'm going to stop there. I might maybe get a second chance if if someone else has asked the same questions I have in mind, but I'll turn it back to the chair and let someone else speak. Thank you very much, Stephen.
You're welcome.
Very welcome together and very impressive. And thank your team.
I will. Thank you. Thank you.
Counselor Vane.
Thank you. To Stephen and Harry and the rest of the team and staff, thank you so much for coming in with a responsible and excellent budget. I generally have no questions. I was able to answer all my constituents' questions and I did my homework. So I just really just want to say thank you. I was, when I read this, I smiled and and I said to one other member of council, I said, you know what, I'm ready to vote on this right now. That's how impressed I was. I I just couldn't believe that you were able to pull this off. And I think a lot of credit has to go to our new town manager for keeping them in line, all the numbers. And Stephen, for your work and your staff, thank you all. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Counselor Vardy.
Thank you. Like the others, well done. I'm, you know, overall, generally speaking, very, very pleased. I do have a couple of comments and some questions. And hate to be painful, but let me start in on them. The first one, and it's it's one I, you know, spoke to you about earlier, Stephen. I've noticed sort of overall in the whole budget, we've made considerable transfers from reserves into our operational budget to the tune of 2.2 million. And my fear is, are we subsidizing our operational budget with reserves when we're trying at the same time to build up reserves? And the problem for me, when I'm going through this, is that I don't have a sense of what the reserves are being used for now, you know, so when it comes to saying, well, you know, we got to buy a new fire truck and it costs X dollars. Well, then that and and we pull that from reserves. I can get that. But when I look at 2.2 million and I see some are big amounts and some are quite small amounts. And it worries me that we're we're kind of buffering our operational budget with the with the reserves. At the same time, you know, out of the other side of their mouth, we're saying we need to build up reserves. And on top of that, we did put, I think, 1.4 million into reserves over the last two years. So. So, you know, we, we've already, we've given the reserves lately a hefty chunk. Um, and, and we did give our taxpayers, uh, a hefty bill last year at 13.9. So, um, I would just like a little bit of clarity on that to start.
Yeah, absolutely. So, uh, figure, um, I prepared, um, uh, it wasn't, it wasn't just reserves. It was reserve funds and development charges. So, um, for development charges, let's say those, the money that came out from development charges is actually meant to fund, um, specific projects. And that's why that money was, was transferred in. It was actually meant for those projects. Um, in terms of we, um, reserves, um, we, um, as I mentioned during the presentation, we would never take money out of reserves to offset operational expenses, um, if they were ongoing operational expenses. Uh, because eventually when the money runs out of the reserve, you're kind of backed into a corner and you're kind of snow cleared. You're going to have to raise the tax levy. So money that comes out of reserves into operations is meant for, um, one-time expenses. And, um, for instance, say the, um, uh, you know, a lot of the planning studies, uh, you know, that was.
I saw that, but I think 120 came from reserves and 180 came from development charges.
Exactly. So, you know, all of that together, there's, there, there was a lot of money that comes out for very specific projects.
Okay.
One-time only. Uh, we would never use it to fund, say, salaries or just your normal day-to-day operating expenses, utilities. Um, and a lot, lot of the projects or a lot of the, um, expenses that the money is used for, um, the money that's in the reserve was probably already most likely earmarked for those expenses.
Okay, that's reassuring. All right, so I'll start, you know, I've got, uh, some comments and questions. You know, as I, as I went through this, and I'll, I'll try to go quickly. Um, and unfortunately, my pages are paginated, so I can't really tell you. Uh, so, okay, I'll start with the, um, a, a question about Fire Station Two.
Okay, let me, I'll just flip to the fire budget.
Yeah, you don't even have to look at it that closely. Um, but Fire Station Two, can we get more community use out of it? Uh, be- because, you know, it's operating on a, at a loss. And, and I understand that not everything in a municipality is going to operate or, um, break even. But I, I feel like, I mean, it's such a great all-round training center. Um, can we use it more for community purposes, the way we do some of the other community properties that we have, uh, that we rent out? So, um, and also with the closure of the Ontario Fire College, is this an opportunity for us to kind of get in there and start promoting our, um, you know, our training station? I, I would just like to see it become more, uh, profitable, or at least less of a, um, drain, if that makes sense.
Yeah, no, actually, the, uh, it's, it's a fair comment. You're absolutely right. Um, it's a beautiful facility. Um, be able to get more use, uh, would, would be great. Um, uh, it didn't get a lot of use in 2020. Just, I think again, because of the pandemic, their registrations were down. Um, uh, in terms of its, uh, um, operational ability for rentals, um, I don't know if I can answer that question. Um, uh, the chief might have a better sense of timing. And, you know, if the facility space can be used a little bit better than, than I could probably. Um, but maybe it's something we can get back to you on and, uh,
It, it's a, uh, y- you don't have to respond to it. It's just a suggestion.
Sure, absolutely.
That we look at ways that maybe the community can take advantage of it, because it's a great facility. Uh, it, it's got a fabulous kitchen, so that if people, you know, had to cater an event or something, you know, as long as it's not, uh, I understand obstructing with fire operations, I, I think that would be something good to, to look at. Um, okay, so some of these I can go over, so. Uh, next one, um, I noticed for, um, under, uh, council, the, uh, 2021, uh, Budget Report Administration, under, uh, it says N P I Director's Fees that came in, in 2020 as actual. Uh, but there's also G P I Director's Fees. I just wanted to make, to make note that either you've lumped them together.
Yes, they're all together.
Okay, all right, so that's good for that. Um, then we get to economic development. Um, I've noticed that for the 2021 budget, uh, you've got nothing there for salaries and benefits. Uh, it was, it was empty.
Yeah, which is kind of interesting actually, because, um, uh, when we, um, when we spoke about this, I actually went into the, actually looked at the, the budget and their numbers, their numbers that, well, we'll slip in the, we'll slip in the prep page. I'm not sure, uh, it could have just been a timing thing when the, when the budget was prepared.
Okay, I just wonder how it's going to affect the bottom line, though.
No, no.
They're not being, okay, because they didn't, they, they weren't on my computer and they weren't on the printout that I got yesterday. Um, the other question I have, on that same page, we had, um, contracted services for 2021 of $205,000. And I was wondering what that was for.
I'm sorry, um, where, where, which, um, where are you?
It's on the, the same page that had economic development, salaries, benefits, and then you move down to general admin.
Yeah.
It's right above legal.
Uh, right above legal.
There's a cost there of $205,000.
Two hundred and five, just give me one second. Uh, the downtown. Down study, in the job review. Okay, so, um, it's for three, uh, three projects during the year. Uh, the downtown reimagine study, um, a new, um, development applications, uh, uh, process study and, uh, the job, um, pay equity review.
Okay, how much is the job pay equity review?
Uh, I believe it was, um, sixty thousand, something.
Okay, because I, I guess that would be something I, you know, because we, didn't we just do, complete a review just over a year ago in concert with the region? So I don't understand why we're doing another one now.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take that. Um, we did, we did not do a full comprehensive internal job equity and gender equity review. Um, it was a market review with old job descriptions. It didn't include all of the staff in the town. Excluded the part-time staff. So the review that was done did not meet the pay equity or gender equity legislation. So this is a mandatory requirement. We're not meeting the legislation now, and it hasn't been done for over 20 years. And we're uncertain, in 2002, we heard that there was one done, but we're uncertain it was done comprehensively. You're supposed to do these every five years, and, uh, we haven't done one in 20 years. So this is a mandatory requirement. It's the biggest dissatisfier in the corporation today that we haven't done this. And we're using the modernization grant, so it has no levy impact.
Oh, good, glad to hear that. Um, uh, I, I, i- is this going to be undertaken by human resources?
Yes, it'll have to be done through a third party. We don't have the skill sets here, and most of these are done by a third party to ensure that.
Be supervised by them, right?
Yes.
All right, so I guess I'm just asking that before we embark on this, we, uh, we do complete the, um, uh, Dorothy, help me with the, uh, the whistleblower policy. Because I, I think that's a priority, so I'd like to see that get done before we, you know, tax our H R person, um, further. I'd just like to see that completed. Then I see under the same here, professional fees, $110,000 in 2020. 110, 161. Can somebody tell me what that was for? Don't all answer at once.
Sorry, Counselor Vardy, where, where are you looking? Which, um?
Uh, I, I'm, I'm looking on the, exactly the same sheet, uh, that showed the 205. If you look in the, uh, the, the 2020 actuals, there was legal for 718, 047. And then professional fees at 110, 161.
Yeah, um, what that probably was is we moved everything into the account called legal fees. Um, uh, going forward.
Okay, uh, and on the question of legal fees, I, I guess, I think it's something that we need to consider, that we're living in a little bit of a different world, and, uh, maybe, maybe we're not planning, um, or putting aside, say, enough for, for legal, uh, because, you know, they, they do come up and, uh, their costs rise, which means our costs rise. So i- it's just something to consider, I'm asking.
Yeah, I mean, society becomes a lot more lit- litigious as well, you know, and, um, you're absolutely right.
Yeah, so, um, and then the next one is the procurement officer. And, uh, I'm, I'm looking at that and I'm seeing, you know, there's, there's a fairly hefty price tag to that. Do we have any, um, uh, data that shows how this is paid off?
Um, so under procurement, um, specifically, yeah, what, um, which line are you looking, referring to?
Well, I'm looking at the 2021 budget, and I'm seeing, uh, 146,690. So I'm wondering, how are we recouping what we're spending? Like, i- you know, are we, by spending this money, are we saving more than 146,690?
Yeah, I, I, I would absolutely think so, absolutely. Um, uh, there's a number of initiatives that we've already, um, gone through, uh, where we're streamlining, streamlining our procurement, where we're combining our procurement. A lot of times we've done, um, one department will purchase the same thing as another department, but we're not, uh, we're not combining that purchasing. So we now have a more centralized way of purchasing. And also, um, uh, with the, with the centralization, we're, um, and the way we're going with, uh, um, the way we tender now, we're getting much better, um, and we're getting more widely dispersed, um, bids. Uh, so I, I really think, um, that yes, this, uh, position will definitely save money, um, in the long run, for sure.
Okay, I, just be good to get some data at some point to see if it's paying off. All right, and, um, all righty. I, I, one generally, one thing generally speaking, is that I see that there's often money for, for training. Um, and it, it doesn't seem to be, i- it, it seems to fluctuate fairly widely, you know, so, so some place with a lot of employees might not get much in the way of training and others might seemingly have more than their, their own, their fair share. So I, I'm just saying something to look at. Uh, I, I, I totally understand that many of the staff belong to a professional associations that have requirements in order for them to maintain their professional requirements. So I, I just put it out there as just something, you know, to, to make sure that there's some fairness in that.
Oh, thank you. That's great. Thanks.
Okay, and then I see, I'm moving over to elections. So I'm jumping ahead. And I see that we, we've, we've put aside, um, oh no, professional fees. We've got $50,000 in the 2021 budget. Is that for the, uh, boundary study?
That's right.
Perfect, okay. And going to, uh, okay, Fire Station Two, I already got that. Um, then if we go to emergency measures, we got that page, the, the protection services, emergency measures.
Yep, I got it, yep.
I- i- in the, the bottom paragraph of levels of service, um, it, it says, you know, that there's, um, that there's a, a compliance that we need to do. And, uh, the management program committee is composed of C E M C, two alternate C E M Cs, E H S Compliance Manager, Chair of Admitted Finance Committee, and a member of the admitted finances dedicated by the A and F Chair. So my question to you, is that, is that rich, Frank? Counselor Frank?
Um, actually, no, that needs to be, um, needed. Uh, as you know, the A and F Committee is no longer, um,
I'm not sure, like, we moved to Committee of the Whole, but I don't recall if we actually got rid of the other committees. And maybe that's something the clerk could, uh, clarify. Sarah?
Yes, we got rid of the four standing committees, moved those four standing committees to Committee of the Whole, and we still have all the advisory committees.
So they were officially terminated?
Yes.
Cancelled, okay. Uh, then on the next page, um, there's a hundred, for the 2021 budget, we've, we've got $150,000 for emergency response. We also show revenue of $150,000. And I'm wondering if you could just explain, explain that to me.
Sure, you discovered our COVID account. Um, so that's where our purchases, uh, for COVID expenses go. So, uh, you know, P P E, um, cleaning supplies, um, the barriers for the downtown, the patio, um, all those, um, direct costs for, uh, for the pandemic.
Okay, that's good, thank you. And, all right, um, I'm looking at, uh, building, uh, under protection services. And we've got transfers from reserves in the 20, excuse me, 2021 budget of 248, 930. Can you tell me what that's about?
Yeah, that would be to cover off, um, uh, the expenses, um, in the building department. Um, some additional salaries were, um, added in or, um, into the building department. And it was, um, uh, going to leave a shortfall in the building department in terms of revenue. Um, as, uh, the building department was, was reorganized. Um, so funds will be coming from the building reserve to cover those. So, um, one of the projects we're looking to do in 2021 is to reestablish and relook at the fees that the building department, um, levies, uh, to recover those costs.
Okay, thank you. And I'm looking at bylaw enforcement, again, another transfer from reserves for, uh, 36, 880. Under bylaw enforcement, protection services. Um, there, we, we budgeted a, a transfer from reserves of 36, 880. So I'm wondering what that's for.
Yeah, we'll look that one up. That one, I don't remember right offhand. We'll have to look that one up.
Okay. Then, now, here's where I'm getting serious. Um, when I'm looking at public works, um, and I'm looking at tree maintenance. So, are, are. It's my son calling me. Um, that we only have $1,000 in there. Is that enough?
Yeah, no, there's more for tree maintenance. I'm not sure what, um, line you're, you were looking at.
It says, oh, downtown tree maintenance, a thousand. And then, and then I go, uh, over to tree planting. And so tree maintenance for downtown was a thousand, tree planting, 2020 actuals for 30,000. Uh, the budget is, um, that we're budgeting 26,000. And I, I just want to say that I received such a response from the, um, Carolinian proposition uh, that I, I believe, um, you're doing a staff report on right now, right? Sarah Sweeney, I think, is looking after that. Um, I, I think there must be a way to, you know, augment, augment that, at least, you know, at the very least, spend what we spent the last time. Um, so, uh, I, I just put it out there. I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind seeing, because it, you know, a little bit goes a long way. a little bit goes a long way in this. And, you know, I'm sure that departments could chip in small amounts that would make a big difference in, in this initiative. So I'm asking, I'm asking the CAO and colleagues to make that a consideration for this year. Then I go to, what's up? I didn't hear you.
Yeah, I was just talking to Stephen. We will work on that together as a team.
Great. So then I'm going to recreation and culture. And once again, I'm, I'm at the tree part. And we've got 20,000 there. And again, I'd like to, I'd like to see that augmented. That'd be a way to do that. And if we can increase that through a reallocation. And then I guess the other thing I have here. Where are the pickleball courts gonna go? That's, I, I get a lot, I, the pickleballers are calling me. And they, they would like to see a pickleball court in behind the. In behind the arena somewhere. Or there might be some unused tennis court somewhere, so that it's, it's kind of kept in, in town proper. That said, they'll take their courts wherever they can get them, but their preference is in town. And they are the most enthusiastic group of citizens, to let you know. And I'm very close to finishing, because I just got a message saying I need to hurry up. On the next page, under general parks and, and under recreation, we're paying $1,000 a year for rental on Lee Wood Estates. For the life of me, I can't figure out what that's for. Anybody? Does anybody know?
That's the park by my house. It's a part of the Stevenson property. And it's, I believe it's rented by the town. We have park equipment and swings. And, but it actually is owned by Stevenson Auto, which is like the last property in Grimsby before. Puttycomb Farms.
Okay, so we just, we're renting space for a park?
Yeah.
That's great, thank you. And my final, final. Okay, and I've mentioned this before, when, and this is for the library. The library needs another outdoor light, so you need to budget for that somehow, because someone is gonna trip and fall. So when it's dark, when it's, when you're leaving the library at night, and especially if it's raining, you cannot see the transition between the sidewalk and the pavement. Somebody's gonna go down. So I would like to see lighting improvements budgeted for that. I've brought it up several times, but nothing's happened and it, it really does concern me. And that is the subtitle of all of my.
Counselor, for the live, the library, the, the outdoor light, yeah, we have money in, in our maintenance reserve for that, which we can, which we can do.
Great, thank you. Thanks for bearing with all of my questions.
Counselor Bafwa.
Well, thank you, Mayor Jordan. If you thought the end was long, I'm sorry, but it's gonna be another, I've got a whole couple pages of questions. I'm hopeful that you'll be tolerant and, and let me get through them, just because I think there, it would be great to have clarification on them. I do appreciate, again, I'll start off with saying that. It is an awesome job. It's a huge job, and I know every year it takes up significant amount of time and effort. So in no way is this what my questions directed in any way to critique the work. It's more for clarification only. With respect to the PowerPoint presentation, I noticed that there was a, the Grimsby Secondary School land use study or land use was included in that. I don't see anything in the budget for that. Am I correct?
Sure, in the planning budget, yes, the Grimsby Secondary School land use study is in the planning budget.
Where?
Okay, so. I'll just flip over to the planning budget.
Because there's 390K budgeted for studies. And I thought 225K from, these 165 from reserves. Yeah, but. I, I don't recall council having approved the Grimsby Secondary School land use study, so I guess it's coming to us.
So, yeah, it's coming, yeah. So under the 390,000 and studies, it's included in there.
How much of it?
Ask my deputy, Sonya. We're just looking it up, counsel.
Okay, I'll keep going, because I have more questions on that pot of money anyway. The downtown reimagine 75K, you mentioned that that was coming from reserves. Which reserve pot is it coming from? And when you, when counselor have already asked, you said it was coming from, it's in the.
Sorry, counsel, 250,000 for the GSS study.
Of the 390?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, your, your other question about.
The downtown reimagine 75K, where's that showing in the budget document?
That would be in the corporate budget.
Which line?
I, let me just slip.
You mentioned it was coming from reserves.
Yes.
So, I don't, not in capital?
Uh, no, no. So under corporate, let me see here.
Because in capital, we've got downtown water main. Reserves in, in there. Well, the 205 under contracted services?
Yes.
Okay, is the 75 for that? The patio program, is that in there? This is the COVID, this is your COVID pot?
No, the, the code, the patio would be in the COVID account, under emergency measures.
Yep. So that's the 60K that's in there, which is, but that's the safe restart grant. So I'm not sure why it's showing in our operating budget, when those are grants which are going under capital at the back normally. If they're funded by a grant, I didn't think they usually showed up in our operating budget.
Yeah, because we're not actually purchasing any assets, they're studies. Well, we, we try to keep the, the capital budget for capital assets only.
Okay. The library levy amount on page 10 of the presentation, just in your summary, you just might need to change that amount to 1027820, not the 1029820, because of the 2K difference.
Okay, yeah, good point, thank you.
The page 15, this is where the admin question that council have already raised about admin costs. The 2020 actual on page 15 is 15,803, only 5K was budgeted. Why the 10.8K increase for professional fees?
I'm sorry, what, which account was that again? I'm sorry.
The page 15, admin, general admin, professional fees.
Okay, let me just slip.
So I'll go numerically by page now.
Okay, thank you, yes. So professional fees.
It shows the actual for 2020 is 15,803, 5K was budgeted for 2020. Why 10.8 over?
Yeah, well, we'll get back to you.
Hey. Page 17, admin, general admin, contracted services, contracted services office, actual was 42,927. Only 10K was budgeted. Same question, why are we 33K over? You don't know that one off the top of your head?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. And then the little bit of the 4-7-4 on page 18, contracted services. There was budgeted.
I'm sorry, counsel, you cut out, sorry. Which, which account was that?
That's just a little one on page 18, admin, contracted services, professional fees. 2020 actual, 4,00274.
Yeah, because all the professional fees were moved and consolidated into the one legal accounting corporate.
This is still sitting, okay, and actual is a little. Page 21, general, general revenue, corporate, general revenue.
Page 21?
Sorry, page 20.
20, sorry, yeah.
Corporate, general revenue, user fees, miscellaneous revenue, actual 70, 71,472. How did we get this unforeseen revenue? And same with the TCA chargebacks, there's an actual 23,713, also unforeseen revenue, not budgeted.
Yeah, the TCA chargebacks is just an internal entry, which is redistributed amongst other accounts. It's just an internal account for us. And the 70,000.
71,472.
71,472 miscellaneous revenue. I didn't know what that was. Yes, I'm actually, hold on one second, sir. Just give me one sec for the 71.
Oh, it just.
Oh, yes, sorry, yeah, I know what it is now. It was some, some monies that were recovered from GEI, from taxes, recovered when filed an income tag or tax reach. Audit or not audit, they filed.
When Delight filed the.
Thank you.
Argued with the Department of.
Yes, exactly, yes. You got the money back, exactly, thank you.
Thank you, yes, that makes sense. Page 24, finance, this is your, up your alley, finance, general admin, contracted services office. 2021, we're budgeting 40.4K. Only 5.4K was budgeted in 2020. Why are we projecting an extra 35K for 20?
Yeah, that is the DAP fee study that we'll be conducting during the year.
Okay, and the professional fees, the actual was 76,931, the 2020 budget was 42K, we spent 35K over. Is that just because it was?
By biodigester, spillover, legal costs.
Okay, thank you. Now, this kind of touches on the counselor already's question, protection services, page 46. Building, general admin.
46, just, I'll just slip there. Yeah, sorry, okay, what account?
Regular salaries and wages. This is where 2021 are showing 551,360, but the budget for 2020 was 458,8, we're 100K over. And did you say, was there additional staffing, or what was that for?
For building department, there was a little bit of change in the salary splits, so allocation of salaries from one department to another. And in this case, a portion of the salary could be coming from, say, the director, who's now responsible for the building department as well. So there, there was a bunch of, you know, reallocation of salaries between departments.
Okay, page 57. Works engineering.
57?
Yep, 57. Levies and grants, professional grants, the MOAF drainage superintendent. The 2020 budget was 10K, but the actual shows a credit of 8,624. How does revenue show, how does revenue show a negative?
We didn't get the grant last year. And.
Leave it blank, don't we?
Yeah, we'll, we'll take a look at, we'll take a look at that. Okay. No, it still doesn't seem, something still seems off. Well, well, we'll look into that.
Okay, looking, and then you might want to look into $562 showing as a credit under expenditures for advertising and promotion as well.
Yeah.
Because there's, they're kind of, it's almost like, it shouldn't have been a credit, it should have been the other way around.
Exactly, it definitely, yeah, it could have been a reimbursement or something that put it into a credit, credit position.
Okay, so those two. Then I, I'm going back on page 93 and 96, the cemeteries, mountain and Queen of Law.
93.
Yeah, 93. This is, this is going back to last year's question about the cemeteries and the investment income, and we have this. Investment income has not been showing in the budgets since 2017. The actual investment income amounts in 2017 for mountain, it actually showed 13,681, the budget was 19,000. 2018, they budgeted 20, showed nothing for revenue. 2019 was budgeted 21,000. Nothing was showing for actual. And again, here at 2020, it's budgeted 11, and it's showing nothing.
Yeah, and the reason for that is the actual calculation of the investment income is done after the budget is produced. So they're adjusting entries that are done and calculated after the budget.
But that's, I thought you said we're gonna do is quarterly and we would have something showing in the budget, so that's, because like, right now, there's like $100,000 not showing anywhere.
Yeah, that, and, you know, we're, we're striving towards that, for those, those quarterlies, and we're, we're almost there, we're getting there, we're, we're pretty close.
It's just weird, because all the other years prior, 2017 had showed the investment income, as was.
I think because we did the budget later. And then by then, when the budget was, say, was done in March or April, those adjustments had already been made.
Okay, I just, I just think by not showing it, it kind of, we've got four years of, of actuals not showing, that's all, investments.
Yeah, if, well, once the entry is made and we rerun it, then you would see those amounts actually, actually go in there.
Okay, I might just ask if at some point you can give that to us or provide us, me with it, so that I can see.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
And then we might want to, I don't know, I just think we need some note on, on the budget record, or when it's audited, on the audited statement that indicates that so much was received from investment income, because I haven't seen it appear anywhere. An updated.
It, it, it's done in time for our audit of financial statements, of course, because then the, the revenue does show in the, in the cemetery's budget, or in, in the, in the financial statements.
Okay.
When, when we actually do the calculation, then it'll be posted and then it'll show in the, in the numbers.
Okay.
It's a timing thing for now.
The page 104, rec, general parks maintenance, salaries and wages, the budget for 20.
Hold on one second, 104, yeah.
Budget was showing for 2020 for salaries and wages, 439.6, but the actual was 522, 597, we're 100K over.
Yeah, and that would most likely be explained by just more work being done in general parks maintenance. So this would be hourly wages. So what would happen is if you have more actuals in this, under this activity, you would have less time or less money in a different area.
Not casual, and hourly, I would think would be under casual, and this is 100,000 in a COVID year.
Oh, okay, I'm also understanding that it's a change in salary splits as well, so an allocation, reallocation between different, different areas. In the wages.
Okay, I didn't see reductions of 100K elsewhere, but oh, I'll look around a bit more than. Page 135, the library. Contributions. There's nothing showing as actual, and nothing is shown as projected for future years. And usually it shows in the previous budgets, those. Financial contribution show. So the, the budgeted 1026400 is there, but the actual for 2020 is not reflected, and the 2021 forecasts are not, and they were showing in the previous budget. And I think that adds, that, that impacts your, just, it, I don't think, it impacts your bottom line, your tallies a little bit, but not. And I think that adds that that impacts your just your, it I don't think it impacts your bottom line, your tallies a little bit, but not because they're not showing.
Yeah, so the the levy is um showing down below um on the bottom line levy impact.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's not, the municipal contribution line is not correct under levies and grants. It's not showing the actual under under revenue.
For twenty twenty?
Yeah, and it's not showing the projected for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, which it did last year.
Yeah, um, we've changed the way we we're we're no longer showing the municipal contribution, the municipal contribution line. Um, we're actually showing it down below um under levy impact down below. And we've done that for um all the, we were starting to slowly do that for all departments, was consistent. And uh the municipal contribution for twenty twenty, again, is just another adjusting entry we would do at year end.
So where will we see the municipal contribution amount on its own? If.
At the bottom, under the, under the, on the last page, under levy impact.
Yeah, but it, okay, so it would be standalone as the levy, that amount would.
That's right.
Would agree with whatever the municipal contribution would be. Okay, so does that mean that we're looking at uh one oh two seven eight twenty municipal contribution for next year?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Planning, so this is going to the three ninety again on page one fifty and.
One fifty.
The three ninety, I just want to get that breakdown again, because I'm a little confused.
Which account was it?
Um, so the profession, the studies, again.
Okay, all right, I'll I'll have, um, Sonya, can you um?
Yeah, so it's a hundred and forty for Grimsby Beach.
One forty for Grimsby Beach, and the two fifty. Grimsby Secondary School.
Okay. Uh, where is the, so is this? Um, I guess then this feeds into the heritage one, where we asked to have the Main Street East land use study two hundred K moved, because it shouldn't be under heritage, it should be under planning.
Yeah, um, I guess, yeah, well, I guess wherever it shows up, it's um, you know, has no impact on the on the bottom line.
Well, now that we're, because we're looking at um only a hundred K, the hundred K for the Main Street East H C D study, which is, was transferred to reserves one oh two seven, I believe. I just think the heritage budget needs to accurately reflect what the heritage costs are, and it's showing three hundred and five thousand under professional fees. And I believe two hundred of that is the land use study, is that correct? And that's on page one fifty-five.
Sorry, page one fifty-five.
Yeah, so that's, because we had this discussion at Heritage about the budget, and I thought that the land use, the two hundred K was gonna get moved out of the heritage and into the planning.
It wasn't actually passed by the by the committee, that there was no resolution to to do that, it was a suggestion by one of the members on the on the committee.
So the three oh five is actually the planning land use study. And we'll need to do a motion to move it to into planning, which it was where it belongs with the Grimsby Beach one.
Yeah, I mean, if if a committee wants to pass a motion, then um, you know, forward it to to council. We can, we can make an adjustment.
So of the heritage professional fees, two hundred is the, of of the three oh five is the one hundred. The and the heritage H C D and the two hundred is the main street and the five regular professional fee balance.
Yeah, it's all together, yeah, we'll we'll break out, uh, we'll break out those amounts.
The reason I'm asking as well is because two hundred K Main Street land use study, I did send an email to staff asking how much of the two hundred land use study was gonna be for the project manager, which was, and I didn't get a response to that. So can somebody tell me whether that two hundred is gonna support the project manager cost?
Yes. It would be for the consultant.
So so it it's a project manager and.
Two, sorry, two hundred for the um. Yeah, so two hundred thousand for the land use study. Hundred thousand for the H C D.
But, yeah, I'm just trying to, because when we pass the um Main Street East land use study.
Yes.
There wa- there was talk in that approved, appropriate management position. And a consult and consultant to do the study, so I'm just wondering how much of the of that is the project manager? And is it a contracted position?
Okay, we're just. It is a contracted position. It is clearly a contract position.
Okay, so there'll be a certain end date as part of that contract.
Absolutely.
Okay. Cannabis study, where is the, I think it was forty K, where is that showing in these studies? Because I don't think we paid it out and we haven't completed it yet. I just wonder where is that amount showing?
For for what? Some sorry, for?
Cannabis study that we're doing on the land use, the uh, the uh zoning and bylaw for the cannabis, that's, we're waiting to do with the next public meeting. That we budgeted in twenty nineteen for it, I think. I don't see it here in the carryforward studies costs. Because it's not completed yet, so I just don't want it to get dropped, because we're gonna have to pay for it, I think, this year, when we get back to having our public meeting. It's al- it was almost done.
So councillor Bothwell, I'm gonna make that your last question for the first round, and then um we'll let you um speak a second time, and we'll move on, if that's okay.
Okay, I'll make a note, thank you.
Yeah. So while you're working on that, Stephen, uh, I'll go to councillor Cadwell.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan, just want to uh congratulate staff on a very responsible budget through these pandemic times. Presentation, one of the best I've ever seen, a lot of good information, uh, put it in a very good order. Uh, you know, you've pro- you've seen a lot too, Stephen, and so have I, and I gotta congratulate you and staff on a very, very excellent presentation.
Thank you, councillor, thank you very much.
Yeah, because you know, I like my hard copy agenda, so uh very impressed, uh, just a couple of things, mayor, and uh just want to uh speak on it's uh in public works, maybe either Brandon or um, not sure if Richard's here or not, but maybe Brandon can help me out here. Just under the uh, it's on page one twelve.
What page?
One twelve. Under the right-of-way grass weed cutting. Uh, casual and part-time salaries and wages. The uh actual in uh in twenty twenty was seven thousand six hundred and seventy-one, we budgeted eleven thousand eight hundred and eighty for the uh for that in twenty twenty. Now, in twenty twenty-one, we're budgeting thirty thousand eight hundred and ten, and I'm just curious, is are we gonna be adding more more uh staff, casual staff, is that, is that those that that extra dollars included, is that for extra staff? Because uh I I I don't, I don't have a problem with that, because uh what always bothers me a lot is in the fall and through the late summer, weeds that are growing along the roadway. Again, and that that's something that every municipality has to deal with, and I've spoken with uh Brandon and Richard a few times, and and staff's done a great job, and on whether they they just cut them off, or I know it's it's a, it's a hard thing to prevent unless you seal the cracks between the curb, sidewalks and roadway, and that just can't be done at a reasonable cost, so, yeah, I'm just curious to that, that budgeting of thirty thousand, where it was eleven last year, Stephen.
Stephen, you're muted.
Uh, so councillor, um, what it is again is a reallocation of salaries from one area to another. Um, we um, what we do is we look at where um a lot of our, where the hours are being spent, or where the time is being spent for each activity. Uh, and we look at that over a period of years, kind of like on a rolling average, and so that's how we allocate that time out to the different activities. So it's just, we just, it's just money being shifted from one activity, say, could be, you know, ditch digging to another area. Uh, based on um longer term, like forecasts or previous history.
So that would be like based on work scheduling, what?
Exactly, exactly.
So I guess what I'm reading from this, Stephen, is as I mentioned, uh, and I'm assuming, and there will be more work done on uh on the uh right-of-way grass and weed cutting, is that, maybe that's the.
It's possible, i- it's possible, again, it's just um historically um where we've spent mu- if we spent money in that area, um, that's how we develop the budget for those activities.
Okay, all right, that sounds good.
Um, it's, there's, the salaries are one pool of money, and they're digged up um through the public works, all these public works activities based on historical um spending in those areas.
Yeah, thank you, Stephen, I do remember a lot of that back uh in the seventies and eighties too, yeah, my last one uh uh, like for Brandon, um, I just reading through the reports and add in the budgets. I uh, I didn't see it, and I know we've been very proactive with regards to the sidewalk, proposed sidewalk for Nellis Road South and Dorchester to Hedgeland. And I just saw, I know Brandon gave us an email, a very good update, and I just wondered if uh and I know what times are tough with with this very lean budget, uh, if we can be ma- maybe looking to uh move forward uh hopefully this year, with the sidewalk, uh proposed sidewalk on Nellis Road South. And I know the uh, the study incorporated the Nellis Road and Dorchester. But is there a way, Brandon, just to move this quicker, if we could? Right, it's there, it'd be great.
Sure. Uh, Brandon, could you um speak to that? I believe the project was scheduled for twenty twenty-four.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure, uh, so councillor Cadwell and through you, Mr. Mayor. So we we have identified, or we will be identifying both the uh sidewalk on Nell's Boulevard South or sorry, Nell's Road South from uh Kennedy to Dorchester. And then there's a missing section from Dorchester or on Dorchester from Nell's Road to Hedgeland, I believe, that we will also be. As you know, we're we're currently completing the study for the traffic uh speeding complaints that we had in that area. And uh one of the uh outcomes of that will be uh likely the recommendation of a sidewalk. Again, there is a a capital impact to that of roughly, we're saying around five hundred thousand is our initial estimate, so we're looking how we can uh fund that and fit that within our forecast, currently it's shown as a twenty twenty-four project funded through O C I F and gas tax, however, uh, we had talked about, and there may be an opportunity to phase the work and 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 bite it off in smaller chunks, so we will certainly look at that.
Yeah, uh, thank you for your response, Brandon, because re- the reason I'm bringing this up again, and it has been ongoing for a few years. Uh, I have been taking pictures of people walking up and down from the distance, I'm not infringing on privacy or anything like that. What where where I'm concerned is the uh, the height of the wind roll from the snowplows, which has forced people to walk on the roads, and and to me, uh, again, with a lot of children walking to school, and I and I thank staff in the past for the sidewalk on Kennedy, great work, uh, supported by the uh by Sarah D. Divitas, the principal of Nellis School at the time, but that that's my main concern right now, Brandon, I mean, we we got hit with a pretty good snowstorm. Mount of snow, and it it just, it just from a safety perspective, and and I'm just concerned of all people walking on the road, so I I appreciate your response, and I appreciate you trying to look, uh, maybe we can maybe find some funds to allocate, move move, do part of it, do something a little quicker than twenty twenty-four, I appreciate that very much. Thanks for looking into that. Uh, that's it, Mayor Jordan, thank you.
I was just gonna add to that, uh, you again, we're looking at other sources of funding, so if there's any uh that we'll certainly look at how we can move that out.
Thank you.
Councillor Sharp.
Thanks, Mayor Jordan. Um, I asked our town manager to keep our budget low this year, and I wasn't sure how COVID was gonna impact us. But when I received the budget, uh, the draft budget, I was pleased. One point eight one percent is manageable increase, and I hope to continue that for the next several years. I have faith that our town staff can achieve that. So great work, and thank you too for an excellent presentation. I do have a couple of questions. Um, first, I just want to ask, how much is our advertising budget? I know, I know it's within a couple of departments, and it's kind of broken down, do we, do we have like a total figure of how much we spend on advertising?
Yeah, we're just, we're just pulling that up, councillor.
Mm-hmm, then so I have a couple, so I wonder if we can um I wonder if we can pool those budgets together, and if we can um take out a weekly full-page ad or um, and we can all advertise in one place, between all the departments, a consistent place, where you always know where to look in in the newspaper, and um hopefully, we can find some efficiency through doing that. And and maybe we can free up some funds within our existing budget um for alternate forms of advertising, like online, and uh how, so how much was that total amount?
Seventy-one thousand.
And that's from, can you break down which departments that that comes from, the 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 majority of it?
Yeah, we're, we'll, we'll pull that up.
Oh, wait.
Councillor, while we're pulling that up, um, do you have any other questions?
I do, um, so while we're waiting, my next question is about garbage cans on Winston Road. We have the Main Street, um, Winston Road area. Is there any money in the budget for for garbage cans and garbage removal on Winston Road?
I'm not sure, um, Brandon, again, could you, would you be able to answer that?
Yes, sir, again, through you, Mr. Count, uh, sorry, through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yes, we are planning to replace the uh garbage bins or uh recycling receptacles in the West End Winston Road, in the in the main uh area there, uh, with uh the same uh type uh capacity as what is in the downtown. Double the size of what is currently in place, so you will see uh an increase uh in the capacity there.
Okay, that that's excellent, and the other question I have, Brandon, while you're here, um is about same area about um winter maintenance on the waterfront trail. Do we do any winter maintenance on the waterfront trail?
Right through you, Mr. Mayor, uh, no, we, uh, so as part of our winter maintenance and response uh uh procedures, we've identified certain areas that don't uh, that aren't maintained in the winter. Uh, they're primarily focused on the pathways. Um, uh, the when, the pathway in along the lakefront would be very difficult to maintain, given the uh, you know, the the sus- sus- susceptibility to ice formation, given it's close to the lake, uh, you're gonna have wave action, wind and all that, it would be really, really difficult for us to maintain. Uh, there is a liability associated with, uh, if if we did maintain that, then the expectation is it's gonna be a dry and bare condition, and we'd have to constantly attack that in terms of laying down salt, so it's, I'm not sure it's an environmental uh, uh, protective uh, uh, response either, so uh, in in short, uh, no.
Okay, luckily, the um ice and snow season is is only a few months long, and um and hopefully, we can learn to to live with an unmaintained waterfront trail. I don't really have any other questions, um, some of my councillors before me, they they were fairly thorough, and so I've been listening to their questions. Do we have an answer? Do we have an answer on the, on the budgets?
Yeah, so for the advertising budget, just looking here, planning 22,000. Recreation, about 24,000. What we got here, libraries, 6,000, human resources, 7,000. Public works, about 4,000. So those are some of the, some of the bigger amounts, and there's smaller amounts scattered throughout.
Okay, thank you. If, if we were to consider what I mentioned, consolidating those into one advertising budget? When, when, when can we talk about that? Obviously, this is not the right.
Yeah, after the budget, we can look at a, at a strategy for, for advertising. If directed by, by council.
Okay, that's great. And I think that that might be a really good idea. I think that we could find maybe some efficiency and some cost savings, or maybe we could just get more for our money. And, you know, that, if we're spending $70,000, it's a, it's a substantial amount to, to bargain with. And I think that we should be responsible with those monies. But thanks, that, that answers all the questions that I have for now. Great work on the budget. I'm so pleased to present this with both the 1.81% increase, and, and then with our, with our hospital levy, 2.64%. The hospital levy, we calculated separately. And I have made friends with a few councillors in the local municipalities. And I said, like, we have a plan to pay for the hospital. They're like, oh, we, we don't, they don't know yet what they're, what they're doing, but we do. And that's, you know, for a long time, when I, when I got elected, I thought, what are we going to do? And since last year, and our town manager and treasurer have helped us come about this plan. And it's nice to know, it's, it's nice to know what we're doing. And less questions for us, because we're responsible, and less questions for the residents that we have to answer to, because people ask, and it's nice to be able to tell them, we have a plan. And that feels good. So thanks again for, for the presentation and all the work that went into this budget.
Your comments, councillor.
Councillor Dunstall.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. If I might echo the same accolades that my predecessors on council have already said, it's a wonderful professionally done budget with, it's very result oriented, as we can see from the highlights of 2020. So a very impressive budget. And thank you to our town manager and our director of finance for great work, along with the team. I just have a couple of questions. One, Stephen, in your preamble to the consolidated budget, you mentioned that insurance rates had leaped up by 32%. Specifically, what forms of insurance? Because I'm looking through the consolidated, some, some things were budgeted with a, not much of an increase in insurance, depending on the department, and others were double. So what, what was it? Building insurance, is it benefit insurance? What, what part? And I guess I'd like to ask too, if you could give us a handle on, on what that cost is and how that has impacted our levy in a percentage? Because we're dealing with a 1.8% increase, and is that predominantly because we've got a 32% increase in our insurances, which we, obviously, we have no control over? You said other municipalities are experiencing the same conundrum as we are? And it's hard to do anything.
Yeah, so you'll, you'll see throughout the budget, different light items for insurance, and we allocate insurance costs to each department based on risk. So the more risk that a certain department faces, they get more of the insurance premium. Sorry, you know, that's the way it goes, right?
Oh, that's fair, that's fair.
And, oh, excuse me, just escaped me, your other question. I'm sorry. Oh, sorry councillor, it's 0.84 of 1% on the levy, the insurance.
So about 50% of the increase is from insurance?
Yeah, yeah. It was, that was an unfortunate surprise that we weren't accounted, you know, that we had no idea was coming. Also, the biggest, you asked about, you know, what was the biggest line of insurance that it hit? Where that increase came from? It's, it's liability. It's our corporate liability policy. You know, fleet, there wasn't much of a change, and even property, facilities, you know, there wasn't much change. It was all liability.
Okay, great. And the other question I had was, and maybe our director of services might have the answer, because I have actually spoken to her in the past, and it was on, it was on her bucket list at some point, but I don't see it in the budget for this year. We talked about the Gibson Street Bridge being redone, but there's another bridge that's been physically shut down, and it's at the end of, or the top of Ontario Street and Lake. There's a little bridge that goes across a 40-mile creek there, in a bit of a gully. And we've had the bridge closed off because it's, was unsafe, and I had residents telling me what was going on with it, because they were able to circumvent the, whatever it was that was blocking it off, climb over it and still use the bridge. And so when I talked to Director Sweeney, she, I think she went and had it permanently closed. And of course, the couple that talked to me came back later on to see what was going to be done. And I said, well, you can't use the bridge at all now. So, so they're going to come and ask me again, because they're in a new year. When do we see us doing anything with that bridge? Because of the pandemic and people out in the parks and on our trails, and walking so much more, I think it should be up the priority list, say, a little, considering that it's, it's not a good idea to leave a bridge closed for too long anyhow, when it had, it has value being open. Do we know what's going on with that one? When, when will we be budgeting to replace that bridge?
Councillor, just got word that they're working on options now to look at that this year.
Oh, good, this year then, okay.
Not, not, not in the, not in the budget, but next year, but looking at options as to what they can do this year.
So we're just, it's going to stay closed for another year?
That's my understanding.
Yes, okay, okay. Thank you.
Councillor Ritchie.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to thank staff for all the work they've done on the budget here. You know, thankfully, thank goodness, 2020, and maybe all the questions of 2020 are out of the way. But maybe I'll ask one more. Did we finish, just for more for the public, did we finish 2020 with any kind of deficit?
So back in December, we brought, we brought forward our 2020 forecast. And we had forecasted a small surplus. If, if we didn't bring the COVID money into the, from our COVID grant, we projected a small surplus of about $54,000 approximately. But with the legal bills that we've been getting in since that time, that little small surplus has been whittled away. But we still will have an overall surplus because of the money we spent fighting COVID, for our direct costs with COVID, PPE, supplies, and all that. Because I believe we were bringing in 200, over $200,000 to help us offset those costs.
Well, that's great. You know, with everything that's happened over the past year and COVID, I want to say thank you to all of staff, the CAO, and everyone for, for also doing their due diligence and being responsible. And so that's my little introduction to being responsible. Wasn't too long ago that we had a little presentation, and I do believe that this, that this budget's very responsible. But I just, I guess another question that I'm going to ask to the public that we already know, do we currently have an infrastructure gap at this time?
Yes, absolutely.
And I guess my point is there, is that here we are, and I understand during these times that are tough. But I think that I, you know, even though it would have been a tough decision, I'm kind of a little bit missed that we didn't put maybe some kind of financing in for infrastructure to try and close that gap. As we all know as a council, that in 10 years, that gap grows, and in 25 years, that grows even more. And it's one of the things that I know when I ran on my campaign, that I wanted to be a responsible government. And I think that, if anything, that I know that it's, it's a different year with COVID, but I still like to think that we should be looking at putting something away for infrastructure. For us to be responsible, I think it's very important that we, we try to look at closing that gap. Thank you.
Councillor Vardy.
Thank you. I just need some quick clarification on a couple of things. One, and I'm going to direct this, if I may, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Antonetta. Are you there?
We have Stephen taking the questions first.
Oh, okay. So I'm a little confused after Dorothy's questions as to how much we're spending for Main Street East and on what. So can I have like the exact breakdown of, I mean, I don't, I don't care if it's in the planning budget or the heritage budget. I want to know what's being spent in total for Main Street East and what, and what it's being spent on.
So there were two projects for Main Street East. One was the Main Street East Comprehensive for Land Use Study. And that one was, that was the 200,000? 200,000?
Okay, but Stephen, I'll stop you there. Did that include salary for a consultant?
Yeah, it's a, it's a consultant report, yes.
Okay, so that's, it's included in that?
Yeah.
That's the. Sorry, there was, okay.
No, nothing, yes.
All right, so 200,000 for the land use, and was it 100,000 then for the HCD?
That's, sorry, 100,000 for the HCD, that's correct.
Okay, that's great. I just wanted to be sure about that. So we're going to be spending a minimum of 300,000 towards that. Good, because that's a big priority for the residents that I talked to. The second one is the, I don't recall seeing anything about the Pump House Pier. And I'd just like to know what's, I thought we were getting gas tax money or something to, to put towards that. I'd just like to know the status of that.
It was never a project that was actually approved in, in last year's, or wasn't introduced into this year's budget. I'm not quite sure exactly what the thinking is right now. Perhaps Sarah can, can address that?
Is she going to, come on?
Sorry, I was demasking. The plan is to do some design work for it this year, and it is in the budget next year. We're working with Public Works on that one.
Perfect, okay. That's great, and I'm glad to hear that. Because I think when we talk about infrastructure, I, I think that's a really important addition to the town of Grimsby, because I know it'll get a lot of use. And then lastly, this is just a comment, and it has, it sort of pertains to what councillor Cadwell was saying about, about people walking on Nellis, and he's been taking pictures. And I, I just want to say, I drove down Nellis the other night. It was dark, and there were two people walking along the road, and they were just two dark shadows in the darkness. So I just want to suggest to people that, you, if you're out at night, especially when, you know, this part of town, we don't really have a lot of, you know, streetlights and whatever, so please wear a high vis. Because I, I was just really taken aback by, you know, if I wasn't really paying attention, these people just blended into the darkness. So, and as councillor Cadwell said, you know, there's a lot of snow built up on those roads, so there, and there aren't sidewalks, so they're moving more into the road. And I just think it's something to be careful of, and that's it for me for tonight. Thank you.
Councillor Batwa.
So I don't have as many questions this round. It'll be hopefully quick. Are you okay, Mayor, if I proceed?
Yes, by all means.
Page 152, this is a quick question about the Welcome Centre contribution under ECTEV. 2020 budget is showing 4,800, but I thought we approved 7K in the 2020 budget. It was an enhancement that came up. We had a lot of discussion on it. And from what I see, we actually approved seven. And then I just want to confirm that we're no longer supporting it moving forward. Is that correct, Stephen?
Yes, that's correct. It's no longer being supported.
So it was just an oversight that the 7K wasn't showing in the budget, right, that we approved?
For 2020?
Yeah.
Parks and Rec?
No, the Welcome Centre contribution specifically.
Yeah. Part portion went through Parks and Rec, and a portion went through economic development.
Okay. I didn't see it anywhere else, but okay. That's just strange. This is just a quickie on the heritage again. I think one of the motions we passed was to move the 10K from planning reserves to heritage reserves for the plaques that were promised in 2019. I did, did that happen? I just didn't see it in the.
Yeah, I made those entries. So the monies, that would be a 2020 adjustment. You won't see it through the, through this document here.
Okay, thank you. Then I moved to capital. So looking at the capital, just if you can help me understand, Stephen, when I'm looking at the capital budget summary document at the back of the 191-page budget consolidation, when it has an amount under the municipal contribution column, that means that that amount is coming out of the levy, is that correct? Did I lose Stephen? Hello? Did we lose the finance director?
I don't see him on the screen right now, so. Okay. He's working, working on getting.
I'm going to have Stephen use my screen. We just went down.
Welcome back, Stephen.
Stephen's flash Harry.
My earphones.
Are you all good there, Stephen? Stephen, can, can I ask?
Yeah, I think I'm good. I don't have my computer, but I'll try to answer, sorry, your question.
These are on the capital, in the capital summary.
Okay.
The municipal contribution column, when there's amounts in there that are municipal contributions, those are levy contributions, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so I know when you did say in the original presentation, there's no levy impact for the capital, but that's overall, but these are items that are actually coming out of the levy, correct?
Yeah, when I, when I mean the levy impact, there's no levy increase, capital levy increase. Yeah, there's still, so the levy in the capital is the same as last year.
Okay, so when I was looking over the capital budget summary compared to last year, number of items in there, I know we're doing ongoing work on. So there was a $40,000 each for the shoreline protection, for the ninth and sixth street and the outlets. So I'm assuming that's the engineering study portion, and now.
Exactly, exactly.
Some gross costs of like 200,000. Some gross costs of like 200,000 for one, for another 100, okay. I'm glad to see the Tomahawk Drive storm sewer improvements. I think there was issues with storm sewer and water pooling out in that end of town. This was also in last year's capital budget and approved. I see it again in this year's. And I think last year there was a, it was coming out of a grant. So I don't know if we actually did any work on Tomahawk, but there was 20K that was supposed to be funded through a grant and it's showing again this year now as coming out of reserves. And 10K out of reserves plus, yeah, no, just a total of 10K for that work. So ongoing, I guess 20K was a grant last year and another 10 is coming out. Or.
I'm not sure what grant that might have been. For that kind of money, it just seems kind of small for it to have been a, been a grant. It could have been a contribution from, from another, from a developer or, or something. But usually a capital grant for 10,000, those don't, you don't usually have those.
Yeah, that was, it was 20K last year showing us 10K this year, but out of reserves.
I'll take a look at it, but.
No, I just, it was great to see the work. I'm hoping that it's.
Sure.
Now, this is the biggie that the maintenance management software, so it was in last year's capital budget as well. And it was in there, it's in like three places in the capital budget. And last year, it was 100K approved for it in 50K out of external contributions, whatever that is, and 50K on the levy for a total of 100 out of transportation. And then there's another.
In water and sewer potentially as well.
50K out of reserves for water and sewer. So there was like 150,000 last year that we approved for the maintenance software. Again, 50K came out, came out of the levy, 50K came out of this external. And then in this year's budget, the maintenance management software is showing 300K under transportation, 200 reserves and 100 out of the levy. So it's 150 out of the levy. Another 300 this year over what we put out last year, which was 100, 150. So and that's, it's 375 this year, I think. There's 75 or 350 this year. So we're looking at like $500,000 so far for this maintenance management software.
Yeah, it wasn't actually purchased last year. So any money that came from the levy last year went into a reserve. And any monies that from last year that were to be funded from reserves, the money just stayed in there and it'll be used.
Last year, the money that was supposed to be funded though from the levy, it was 50, so it was 50K from the levy. External, what's external contribution?
From another party.
For the maintenance management software, do we know who that was?
I'll, I'll take a look right off hand. That I don't recall right off hand what that external contribution was for.
Okay.
I believe it's actually, it's not an external contribution. I think what it was is it should actually be a transfer from reserves.
It was under external contribution.
Yes, and I noticed that, I noticed that when I was going through and reviewing the budgets this year that there were a few instances where that took place and I had to correct it in 2021 that where indicated external contribution, it should actually have been a contribution from reserves.
Okay, so can maybe the CEO explain to me what this really expensive piece of software is? And how much more we're going to be expected to pay for it if we're already looking at both 300K and like 100K is this year's, out of this year's levy for the taxpayer.
Yeah, so I think it was maybe explained a little bit in our workshop for asset management. Where this piece of software will allow us to track our assets to help maintain our assets. So that if there's any repairs, maintenance on these assets, we're on top of it, all work that needs to be done. And so we're really, it helps with our asset management plan and how we do repairs and replacements to our assets.
I think it's a great tool. I have no question about that, wondering how it went up from last year being projected and approved at 150, 150 to like now 350.
Because last year was just meant to be a portion that the software was always going to cost at probably minimum $300,000.
So that's, this is the last charge. There won't be an additional charge coming through. Is there an ongoing yearly charge for?
Yeah, there could be some maintenance, software maintenance fees going forward, yes.
But.
Which would be.
Sure.
No, which would then be part of our operating budget.
Okay, so this is the last we're going to see of it in capital.
If, if we go ahead and actually purchase it, like I said, the purchase probably wouldn't happen until maybe, you know, late this year. And if the project actually goes ahead, right now, the main focus right now is to complete our asset management plans. And we'll see how that work unfolds and as well our exercise on levels of service. So, you know, if all these projects get done and we're ready to move forward with the software, we'll move forward. But if other things get in the way, then it would probably be, could be moved until 2022.
So would that 100,000 levy contribution help us reduce our tax, our tax to the public this year if we didn't take it, that 100K?
Yes, but again, I mean, the plan is, is that we actually go ahead with it this year.
Okay, because it was in there last year and we didn't.
Yeah. Yeah, so what would happen is if we don't use the money, it would go into the reserve and then the project would then be funded from reserves in the, in the following year.
Okay, I'm just looking at ways if there was a way to further reduce, you know, the 1.81%. And if this was an option to delay because it's already been two years sitting and we've got a significant amount was put in reserves last year towards.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's something we want to delay. It has been delayed in the past and I think it's a project we would definitely like to move forward with. So I think it would, the best bet would be to keep it in the budget. So the funds are there to, to move forward if we, if the time allows to actually implement the software.
I guess I'm just looking at ways like, because we, when we had our last Q4 surplus, that report we got said 330,000 surplus this year in 2020. We know we had significant surpluses in 2019 that have really, really increased our reserves. When I looked at the reserve balances from 2018 till now, like 2 million plus over in reserves, water, sewer and in regular and PW and building. So I just was thinking if there was a way to use some of the surplus or reserves not to put this back into the levy this year and to reduce it further, that was just a thought.
Yeah, that, all those surpluses that we get, say, from water and sewer really are help to fund those future asset replacements. As you know, we still have a gap in some of these areas. And so I would, we would prefer not to actually use those reserves for this project. And, and we use that actually for future asset replacement.
It's just that they are already using the reserves for this project, water and sewer. So in roads, there's already like 75K that's coming out for that, so.
Right, and then the rest where we thought we would be best to build it into the levy and not use our, use our reserves. So there is a little bit of reserve contribution. And then, so we don't use all of our reserves for it, we built some of that money into the levy.
Okay, I just, I just think that's a significant amount that's contributing to the capital levy here, that's all. And I thought it might be a different way we could do that. I'm glad to see the 25K as Counselor Sharp mentioned for the Winston Road Waste Receptacles. And I really appreciate Brandon's hard work on helping us resolve the issues down here in the West End with that. Looking forward to that and the Casablanca Beach Park investment in capital. I think that's great. I did want to note too that last year we did approve a couple of parks already, Cindy Park and Pinewood Park were in 2020's capital budget for improvements. They're not in this year's rec capital parks improvements, although they're on the cover, in the cover presentation. The only ones that are currently in the, for this year, it looks like is Dunrobin, which is Great Down By Me, which they're looking forward to a new park and Centennial upgrades, improvements and Casablanca. So I don't see Arrowhead or Sherwood there. I just wondered maybe if, if Sarah could clarify that, if Cindy and Cindy Court and Pine would have already been done.
Sarah, is that something you can respond to?
Yeah.
They should be in there. Stephen, I'd have to work with you. Cindy and Pinewood are, we did the RFP last year. We're just going to do the actual installation at the beginning of this year. Just rather than doing it at the end of the season. And then the other two parks are scheduled to be done this year as well. So they should be in there. They are in the forest that I have and as well to do some improvements to Sherwood Park as well. That's not playground replacement, just for clarification for anybody watching. It's actually some parks improvements in that park that we've worked on with the residents.
Okay, thank you. I just didn't see them broken down here in the capital budget. So maybe it's just something that they're, they're somewhere else, but I didn't see them, so.
I think a lot of them are kind of grouped under parks improvements. In general, it's a general category.
I think it is lumped into one as well.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, that could be.
Yeah, we have it broken out on our capital sheets.
Okay, awesome. Almost done. So the only, the only thing I'm thinking is the COVID, we received a couple pots of money on the COVID. We received the Safe Restart 240K, some of which was used for PPE. The municipal resilience money, 435, 965, I believe. The second phase of COVID Safe Restart, 137K. So total of like 675, 965 plus the 135, 812, 965K. I think it would be great, I know the CEO has been giving us updates, but and it's all through this budget report, but I would like to see a separate breakdown of the COVID funding specifically and the actual expenditures appropriated against each of those pots. That's just something for a council report, just to help me be able to pull it out of the budget and better look at how it, it matches up to these funds that we've received. So that's just something that down the road would be appreciated.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Also, the last thing is the, I don't, well, two questions. The impact assessment, reassessment for people who, who, we talked about this. I, being in this area of Casablanca, I was from 2016 to 2019 or whatever, we had the regular annual assessments and they raised my property value and I ended up getting hit with the tax bill a little higher than most people because they were getting me up to where my property value should be. And that in 2019 kind of impact said they were freezing it. So for this year, people who would have expected a, a value assessment increase won't see that, right, will still, they won't have that impact on their tax bill. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. And we still have, haven't heard yet when the reassessment will take place. And impact was to have done a reassessment, well, they actually did it. They did a reassessment as of January 1st, 2020, to take effect for the 2021 tax year. And that didn't go ahead because of COVID. So honestly, I don't know what impact is going to do. We're all waiting to hear what, how the province and impact are going to move forward with this.
Great, thank you. And last question is just, I know the town sewer portion is not included in the estimates that we're saying on the, on the tax impact. Can you give an idea what the actual town sewer portion on top of the tax levy that, or the levy that we're looking at, that people can expect to see on their tax bill?
Yeah, so the average house, the 443,000 roughly, will see an increase, an annual increase of 64 cents on their sewer charge.
But what was, the actual sewer charge itself is separate from this amount?
It's, it's on the top. I'm sorry?
On an average, like a sewer amount is a percentage of our tax bill as well, right?
It's a percentage of your, yes, it's a percentage of the tax bill, yes.
So when they're looking at that, it's just because I had to explain that to some people that that's an additional amount on top. And it's not a 6 cents, it could be $150 or something like that of your tax bill as your town sewer.
Right.
I'm not sure myself, but there's a, so there is an amount above what we're saying.
That's correct. So there's an additional town portion that accounts for the sewer levy. I don't include it, I don't show it there on, on the total tax impact. Because the idea is to compare, have our numbers comparable to other municipalities which don't have a sewer. We're the only ones that have the sewer levy on their, on the tax bill. So to make our numbers comparable to other municipalities in the region, we, we show exactly what is taxable in common to all the municipalities. So their general lower tier levy, the region levy, the region general and waste levy, and then the education. So our taxes might be a little bit higher on the tax bill because of the sewer levy. But then your water bill will be lower than other municipalities because the sewer levy is not on our water bill. So to compare apples to apples, it's, I, you know, I find it better that we don't include in these numbers the sewer charge.
I think that answers everything. Thank you very much again, Stephen.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Thank you.
Counselor Ritchie.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to ask a question about the software again in regards to, this is going to help us with our asset management, is it not?
Oh, yes, absolutely. Yes.
Um, now, we had a little session again, like I said, a couple of weeks ago. And I'm not sure if I'm allowed to say this or not, but also ask in form of a question. What's our current infrastructure gap? In cost of dollars?
Yeah, so our current backlog right now is about $4, $4 million.
Right, and we had estimates there. And what would it be in about 10 years? I could say it. I have it written on the, if you.
Sure, if you can remember the number. I can't remember in 10 years, but.
Our current infrastructure gap is 4.3 million. The estimate in 10 years is going to be 7.8 million. And then current gap in 25 years is 65 million. So I just want to reiterate that, that this gap is things that we're not planning for in the future. It's not in reserves. A lot of our reserves are things that we put forward to, say, as like a fire truck. We put a little bit in every year, so when it comes time to purchase the product, we have the money there. So there is no massive or there's no large tax levy on our citizens. So I just want to, I just want to reiterate that, that once again, we were given a chart and with a zero, and that's, that's if we don't put any money into our, our asset management this year, a 0% levy increase. We're looking at 4.3, 7.8 and 65 million in 25 years. So I just want people to, to recognize that, that, you know, all these pieces help us because eventually we have to put money in there. 65 is astronomical in 25 years. Thank you.
Counselor Frick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Kevin. Counselor Ritchie for the lesson in in our infrastructure, which I think we're all aware of. And I think this is not a good year to be putting more money into the budget for infrastructure. I think our infrastructure is not in that bad a shape. And I think going forward, we'll catch up. And we have, I think, a lot of money in the maintenance budget this year to keep our infrastructure in good shape. Anyways, Stephen, going back to the budget here, I noticed that under environment, there's a lot of items keep coming up in environment. I'm just wondering if going forward that we could put a separate line item just to cover environmental issues in the budget. So it's all lumped into one, one heading. Can we do that? There seems to be a lot, every year I see more and more items going into environment.
Are you referring to the presentation?
Yeah, sorry, the presentation, page 14.
Yeah, um, keeping it, lumping it all together is difficult because a lot of these costs for these certain different projects come from different departments, whether it's the water, the water department, the sewer department, or, you know, it could be parks, it could be planning initiatives in different departments. So I think we would lose track if we, if we had them all lumped into one.
Okay, just, just a thought. I wanted to speak to slide 16 or page 16, which one last question, I would think that we're, we're probably getting, getting prepared for the vaccination of the population in the area in Grimsby. And I believe we picked the YMCA as a, as a facility to do that. Is that the only facility or are there others, potentially others?
Not that I'm, not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay, is there a cost attached to that? If we, do we bear that cost?
There are costs and we're, we're, we believe those will be reimbursed from the region and possibly from the province.
Okay, I'm just curious as to whether we, maybe we could have used the fire hall too for some of this. Okay, I'm just curious as to whether we, maybe we could have used the fire hall too for some of this.
I'm sorry, Counselor, sorry.
I was wondering why we didn't consider fire hall two as a vaccination center.
I, I believe the region looked at all available facilities to determine the best, the best spot, and for one reason or another, they chose the YMCA as the, as the best location. I'm not sure exactly what criteria were looked at, but.
It's the why. It's the why.
It's the why.
Okay, okay, the last, last thing, I just, once again, want to say thanks for putting together a great budget. I'm really pleased to see that you're using a bit of a corporate approach to our budgets, that, that kind of pleased me a lot, so that, that's, that's a good way to go. And, and you know, the, the going forward, hopefully we'll continue along those lines and we'll see this type of responsible budget. Anyways, thanks, I know it's been like being on the, being in the Senate, being grilled because, for just, for the justice, for the Justice Department. But great job, thank you very much, you, you handled it very well, and I must thank everybody for putting together a really fantastic budget, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Vane.
I, I just wanted to comment, I know we all have different experiences, different training and so on and so forth. But one thing I want to make very clear, and I, I have to support what Counselor Ritchie said, if we continue to defer everything as is being suggested on some issues here tonight, and we wait until later, we're going to end up back, or a future counselor will end up back in the same spot we were last year, trying to balance, we cannot keep robbing the, the reserve funds, we can't keep deferring things. The sooner we get them done, the cheaper they're going to be, as I've said previously, in 1950, the TTC could have built their whole system for 50 million dollars, now they're looking at 50 billion. So the longer you put it off, the more we're going to pay, and there's only one person that's going to pay it, and that's our taxpayers, because that's the only place we can go, so I'm going to strongly suggest that we just take the budget the way it is. I think it's done very well by the staff, and I'm very impressed with the staff and the town manager, and I think you've done a fantastic job. And I think let's just do what we've got to do, the budget rate is still low. We're not asking ridiculous amount, but we are going to end up asking the taxpayers for a lot more in the future if we don't do this properly now, that's all, thank you.
Counselor Cadwell.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Jordan, just a quick comment, with the region picking the YMCA, I'm just wondering if they're also considering the town of Lincoln, good location, that way you can almost get two communities with one location, so I don't know why they did it, but I think, I think it's a very good choice. Fire halls, you don't want to be, you don't want to be backlogging our fire halls in case we get a call. The parking lot needs to be empty and available for the firefighters, so anyways, I look forward to the future with how this is going to roll out, thank you.
Thank you, seeing no further questions before I read the resolution, I just want to thank all of the staff for putting together such, such a responsible budget in these trying times. I think we as council can all be proud of this budget and proud of how senior staff and all staff work together, just to, to really do a fantastic job through, really, times like this we've never seen. And I just want to thank all the counselors for actually going through the budget and offering, answering, or asking tough questions and, and looking at tough decisions and, and holding staff politely to, to the questions, and, and I just really feel proud that, to represent council here and, and to, to see what we've done through, in the middle of a pandemic, and, and I just, I just ooze with pride what, that we've done such a good job tonight, and so thank you very much, everyone. Now I'll read the resolution, moved by Counselor Cadwell, second by Counselor Sharp, resolved that the 2021 proposed consolidated budget be received, all in favor? That's carried. Now I just need a mover and seconder for the general operating and capital budgets. Counselor Frake and Counselor Vardy. Moved by Counselor Frake, second by Counselor Vardy, resulted in the 2021 general operating and capital budgets in the amounts of 24,710,400 and 13,276,820 respectively, and a levy of 14,920,93 be approved, all in favor? That's carried. And I just need a mover and seconder for the wastewater operating and capital budgets. Counselor Cadwell, Counselor Dunstall. Moved by Counselor Cadwell, second by Counselor Dunstall, resulted in the 2021 wastewater operating and capital budgets in the amounts of 6,445,750 and 885,000 respectively, and a levy of 6,239,750 be approved, all in favor? That's carried. And a mover and seconder for the water budgets. Counselor Vane and second or Counselor Sharp. Moved by Counselor Vane, second by Counselor Sharp, resulted in the 2021 water operating and capital budgets in the amounts of 7,478,700 and 1,126,500 be approved, all in favor? That's carried. All right, so at that, we're finished for tonight, so I just want to say good night, everyone, enjoy your evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.